I will call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let her take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
Knudsen.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Brock.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
All right, first up is comments from citizens. This is your opportunity to make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda. If there is something that is on the agenda that people would like to talk about, then we would have to move it to a public hearing if that's what the council so desires. Please keep your comments brief. Under five minutes would be great. Please try not to repeat. And when you get to the mic, please identify yourself and where you live. So, are there any comments? Anybody have any comments? Anybody have any comments? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Next up is a discussion on the Ethics Code.
So, the council had requested that after we had a few ethics code violation complaints filed that we review the code itself. And so, the city retained an attorney that works often on behalf of the city for our insurer, who does a lot of these kind of ethics sort of things. So, her memo was attached into the packet. And then Ms. Jacobs is here as well and will be giving kind of a quick summary of her review and then be available to answer any questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as Erin mentioned, I reviewed your five-page or so Ethics Code. I compared it against a lot of cities, other city municipalities' codes, both in Wisconsin, other bigger cities as well. And my memo details my review of that, the thoughts that are good, and the points that should be considered. And really, it comes down to just seven points. Two are very word-specific, and the rest are more items for consideration, whether or not it is, it would be a best practice. So, I wanted to go through the Ethics Code chronologically when I do this. And then, like Erin said at the end, I can take any questions. So, the setting out of the declaration of policy, responsibility of the public office, and the description of the different types of conduct that would constitute an ethical violation is all very well done, very thorough, compares with just about any other municipality I see out there. There was no glaring change that I would recommend being made there. The only change I recommend is word, is a word change, and it's probably just a very lawyerly thing to point out. But in section, let me flip it to there, in section 37.3, it talks about certain conduct. And it has, you know, all conduct should be, the very first one states that, you know, all officials and employees should be loyal to the objectives expressed by the electorate. And that's very aspirational in nature, very appropriate wording for that. The second one, 37.3 or dash three B though, talks about that officials and employees should not exceed their authority or breach of law. And if I were drafting this the first time, I would change that to shall not. They shall not exceed their authority or breach the law. Now, if this was the only change to be made, as long as it is applied in that way that compliance is mandatory compulsory, that's fine. So, it doesn't, this is not the end-all-be-all of changes that have to be made, but it is something in reviewing, I would point out that if other changes are being made, I would revise that language to make that very clear, that this is not something that is anything less than mandatory to comply with the law. So, and that's really all the comments I had as far as the substance of the conduct that is at issue. I had some points to consider when it comes to the process by which ethic complaints are handled. And the first thing is that there is reference in the Ethics Code that a sworn complaint should be submitted. And by sworn complaint, that means a complaint that is notarized by somebody, that they notarize their signature, that everything, the person is probably attesting, that everything is true and correct above it. And two things to consider, one is to have a complaint form in and of itself. And that way, I attached two samples. I attached one city that has a sworn component where the person making the complaint goes and gets the notarized, their signature notarized. The second was just simply a complaint. Both are very detailed in the kind of information they want. The second one is one where the complainant would just simply sign after attesting that everything they put before is true and correct under penalty of perjury. So, it doesn't, it still has that statement in there, that everything put into the allegations is true and correct. The only difference is that it does not require the individual to go get it notarized. And that's something to consider. As I've said, some municipalities do it one way, other municipalities do it another way. And there is no right or wrong there. The one aspect I would want the city to consider is that if you did have an individual, think of an individual that a, some kind of official or employee was bullying in some sort of way or had power over them, and they are not a sophisticated sort, they know something bad happened, they were pushed out of their apartment, they were pushed in this situation, they felt disadvantaged, but they just don't understand what the sworn affidavit, the sworn process is. And it's very easy for most of us professionals to know what that is, but it's not hard to get into a situation where somebody doesn't know those kind of, understand that. So, to the extent that that would be a deterrent, I would have you, I would at least have you consider whether or not you want to keep a sworn affidavit component to the complaint form, or whether you would prefer to have a complaint, have a form, and they just at least attest that what they're saying is true and correct. So, there, some think there's some heightened guard against fraudulent statements if somebody has to go out and get the affidavit on there. I think that having the statement that everything is true and correct under penalty of perjury might serve the same function. But again, that is something that is a choice, and neither way is required under the law. So, when it comes as well to the complaints, that's complaint form sworn, we did that, the next would be the manner in which the hearing is held. And the provision in the Ethics Code simply says it's a public hearing. And I am assuming based on that, that any hearing that the Ethics or the Finance Committee here would hold in order to deliberate an ethics complaint would still understand that they can go into closed session, especially if it involves somebody's, somebody's own employment. You've got the provisions of, oh gosh, I'm blanking on the statute number, but 1935, to go into closed section, closed section in order to deliberate either about a person's reputation, or if it's an employee, about information regarding their terms of employment. So, at least consider that. I don't know, I'm not pushing and saying it's an absolute, that the code should be updated to reflect that deliberation can occur in closed session, but some clarification on that, if you are going to do other changes, would be appropriate. So, the final three points to consider is that at the present time, if you look at section 37.8, presently, the Finance Committee, all ethics complaints are handled by the Finance Committee. And the Finance Committee is, has a membership of four. The mayor also presides, and then any recommendations are sent over to the common council. And one thing to consider there is that more often than not, I see standalone committees, and I see committees that have an odd number, whether it's five or seven. And a great number, excuse me, a great number of ethics committee, commissions, committees have a membership of seven to allow for deliberation, allows for more recusals if people do business with a certain person, or if they have some other kind of personal professional relationship regarding either the complainant or the person about whom is being complained. It gives a little more, it gives just more safeguard that it won't just be three people that's going to handle a complaint if something comes in. So, that would be one thing to consider. It's not mandatory, it's not uncommon to see smaller ones, it's not uncommon to see, I haven't seen too many that were another committee also handled the ethics complaint, the ethics issues, but I've seen many municipalities that don't have any kind of ethics committee, and they have to deal with that ad hoc. So, there's no requirement to switch or do an upgrade, so to speak, there. But at the same point, if the resources would allow it, that would be something that I recommend, is consider having a standalone committee. And perhaps they don't meet very often, perhaps it's members from other committees that house, that make up that committee. And as well, consider moving to a seven-member board on that, or committee on that. So, the final is a smaller point, and that is under the violations and penalties, it's very express that the violation could constitute cause for suspension, removal from office or employment, or other disciplinary action. And I would want you all to consider having censure being a possible resolution or the outcome of certain ethics complaints, because in some instances, the conduct doesn't necessarily warrant a suspension or a termination, but it does warrant either a private or public censure, that this conduct is not appropriate and should not be done in the future, setting example for others and/or notifying that person that what they did was not appropriate there and should not happen again. So, even, because this one says, you know, may constitute, you know, these things, it doesn't say including but not limited to, I would consider if you are going to do any changes to this, to incorporate censure as a possible penalty if a violation is found. So, that is in a nutshell what my review was. Again, the substance of it, the descriptions of the conduct was just very well done, and everything else is pretty much just considerations of things to tweak in order to have the best practices followed. So, with that, I just want to open up to any questions.
Anybody?
What's the next step in the process?
It would be for someone to make a motion to amend in order to have certain language. You probably would want to task someone, if you have a discussion now and agree to what changes you think should be done, you could task somebody with drafting that, and they would come to present that, and that would be then somebody making a motion to, you know, accept those amendments.
Okay, because it's only, discussion is on the agenda, so we can't take any action that requires a vote.
Correct. You can just, what you can do is have a discussion, and if we can see where you all are going, then Erin or I could be tasked with doing something further in terms of having a redlined version of the ethics opinion forwarded for contemplation of amendment.
Can I ask a question? Have we reached out to the county and how they do it? I know it's one person that takes the complaints.
So, I did talk to the county administrator about it when this was happening, and so their process is a little different, which I think if we're going to look at any changes, it might be worth using that as another resource too that I can talk with Gerald about a little bit. But how they handle it is that, I think, this is my summary of it, if it's not completely correct, but when they get an ethics complaint, it goes to the corporation counsel, the county attorney basically, and it's reviewed by that office. And if they find that there is no merit to it, then it doesn't go any, basically doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't go to the county board or any sort of subcommittees or anything like that. So, they do have, basically, their county attorney review it first to see if it meets a set of standards, I guess, basically. And if it doesn't, then it just kind of ends right there. It doesn't, doesn't go any further from there. So, from what I understand, that they had some of these filed, especially during COVID and some of the things that were happening, but they were never substantiated by the corporation counsel, and it didn't ever proceed out of that office.
Could you send us a copy of the county?
I can, yeah, I can get that.
Policy, please.
Otherwise, I, you know, I have no issues with adding the language. I like the complaint form, I like the option of the closed session, and we certainly can add the censure. But I think that we as a board are able to make these decisions without creating another form of typical government oversight.
Well, if I could add in, I just wanted to check, as I was looking at this, and in Geraldine's conclusion, she mentioned the importance of objectivity. And so, I'm wondering what her legal advice is on that. Is it an independent committee that you had mentioned earlier, or did you have another option for us to consider?
I think that, taking everything into consideration, the best practice is to have an independent board on this that's dedicated to that. Putting aside whichever committee would also do double duty to handle this, whether it's finance or a different one, in most situations, there would be no allegation that there's some not objectivity with that. But if it does involve a member of that particular committee, then because of the ongoing nature of the interaction, it might, it might have, you might have some issues regarding the appearance of objectivity, especially if it involves anything of fiscal nature, because finance handles that as well. That's very often where some ethics complaints come up, is that somebody has misused or misappropriated municipal property, whether a vehicle or something else, for that. So, that's really the only way the issue of objectivity comes into play, is that if the complaint itself somehow bears upon somebody on the particular committee handling it.
Well, undoubtedly, it will, but at the same time, we should be able to have a complaint system like the county and have corporate counsel or our council do the same type of thing as review it and then do the investigation and then send it out if there's a conflict or if he was, ultimately, our goal was not to ever have to do this again, and I can attest to that personally, but that's not the objective.
Same here.
I'm sure.
I will say that the ethics complaint process as it is, does have two things that are similar to the county, as Erin has described it. One is that in order for a complaint to move forward to a hearing phase, there has to be a reasonable basis for the complaint justifying further investigation. That's the language of there. So, if there is a complaint that is on its face frivolous, then it, then the committee is not required to move forward with it. The second is that provision 37.7 also does allow for the committee to refer, to get an advisory opinion from the city attorney.
Geraldine, can I ask one question just to clarify? Even if we do have a third party, that would be some sort of ethics committee, no matter what it's made up of, if it's anything that involves city staff or council members, it would have to come back to the council to make any sort of final decisions. I mean, the committee can only recommend, correct? I mean, because it's.
Correct.
Non-elected officials.
And I've not, I've not advised to make a change on that. So, the ultimate, the vote that, whether it's a four-member board and the mayor sends it on, or whether it's a seven-member board, it is just a recommendation that is sent on to the common council, then the common council has to take a vote on it.
Geraldine, have you ever seen where it would be a committee of the whole that would do this instead of like the Finance Committee?
You mean like the common council?
Yep.
I have not seen that, where it's gone beyond seven people deliberating, at least the initial part, and then moving it on to common council.
So, that's all it would be, we've got six council members and the mayor, so.
Sorry?
I said, that's all it would be, is seven here with six council members and the mayor. It just seems that we could eliminate a step.
You, oh, you mean the complaint itself go to the common council? It's not unheard of, it's not inappropriate. I see more where a committee, I would say, and it's just off the top of my head, a committee handles it probably like 80% of the time. I do think in smaller, I didn't look at many villages, but I'm sure the smaller, the deliberating body, the governmental body, the more double duty that they do. And if it is a situation where, if that's something else you want to consider, is just having the common council handle it so as to remove the Finance Committee from it altogether, that's certainly not anything I would dissuade from. I mean, it is nice in a way to have the committee review it first and conduct a hearing on it. And that would be the change, is that now you have the common council doing the, undertaking the hearing part of it, the taking of testimony, whether hiring an IHO to come in, a hearing officer to come in to oversee it. It makes for a longer process for the common council to do. And typically, in law, we have, we've got the trial court, the appellate court, we usually have layers so that somebody can be more removed and look at it. So, that's kind of our default is what we do. But having said that, it's not unheard of, it's not impractical if that's where you're looking to go, having the common council just handle it. It's certainly a feasible way and appropriate way, and would be an appropriate way, alternative to move forward.
Anybody else?
No, if the ethics complaint involves a police officer, then that would go to the Police and Fire Commission rather than to the Ethics Committee, is that correct?
If it relates to discipline. Police and Fire Commission only has the authority granted by the statute, which is hiring, firing, discipline.
So, well, if it's an ethics complaint, then that would be disciplinary, wouldn't it?
It depends on how the chief presents it, or how, if there are charges that are presented for suspension. If there's a suspension involved, the police officer or the fire fighter has the opportunity to have a hearing before the Police and Fire Commission. But if there's not a suspension involved, then no, it would come before whomever is appointed as your ethics committee.
Okay.
The only other comment I would make, just with respect to committee of the whole considering ethics complaints, we're not just considering ethics complaints related to council members or committee members. This process also is set up to govern employees as well. And so, just consider that as you're thinking about how the process works, if there's an employee disciplinary or an employee ethics issue, whether you'd want that to come before the entire council, or whether you'd want that to come before a subset committee to deal with that type of issue.
So.
Are you saying that that employee would have, let's say, an employee was dealing with an issue with their direct supervisor, and they didn't like how it was being resolved, or they had a concern about how their direct supervisor was interacting with them, and they wanted to file a complaint, so to speak? Is this the avenue that one of our employees would take, the city staff?
Well, if it's an ethics-related issue, right? So, if it's a personnel-related issue, it goes through the personnel process. But if it's, if it's an ethics violation or an ethics-related issue where there's an allegation of a violation, then it would go through this process.
Sarah?
So, I was wondering what our next step is, so it sounds like we have some, maybe some differing opinions here. Do we need to reach a consensus tonight? I mean, I know we aren't up to take a vote. What are the next steps to move forward? The county ethics coming back to us, would a draft coming back to us?
Yeah, I can send you the county ordinance, so you can take a look at it and see. And then what I would say is, once you have a chance to maybe look at that, think about this a little bit, if it's something that wants to be brought up, someone, a council member can request it be added to a future agenda then for that discussion. I think that would be probably the reasonable way to take it to the next step. I'll send that information out to you, and, you know, like I said, take your time, take a look at it, and if you, if you think you want to, you know, make some changes to it, let's, we'll add it to a future agenda for that discussion then, of what those changes would look like.
Can, that, when you send us that information, can we only ask for things to be added to the agenda at these meetings, or can we reach out to you via email once we have seen that?
Often, the mayor gets emails and things between meetings to add things.
Okay.
I mean, the formal way to do it is at the meeting, but it doesn't mean that you have to wait until that time, that's for sure.
Thank you for the clarification.
Or a phone call.
Well, it sounds like the biggest question is whether to have a, an ethics committee that is not made up of the council members or the Finance Committee, and so.
And if I understand the attorney's opinion, it sounds like that would be what she would recommend, is an independent body, not a council members.
Not necessarily.
Is that right, Geraldine?
The independent body could possibly have council members on it. The way that your committee is right now is that, is that the mayor selects the individuals who are on there. If I, I've looked at some different policies, so forgive me if I mix it up with a different one, but I think they're staggered terms, staggered two-year terms. And by and large, typically, I think there might be one person who's also a council member, and then the rest are just taken from either other committees or other individuals from the community.
Thank you. So, that is what you would recommend, is that correct?
If the resources allow for it, yes. Now, if you're struggling to get seven to be on a committee that, you know, only meets when it ebbs and flows and there's a rash of complaints and not, I'm not strong, I'm not strongly encouraging it, but between the two, I do, I do recommend it.
Thank you.
So, is there, Geraldine, is there, is there a strong argument to be made that elected officials, county or county, our city council, should be subject to review by their peers instead of somebody else?
Can you start, the start of that again? What about, is there a strong?
So, I, you know, in other bodies that I've been involved in, ethics committees are generally made up of the peers of the group. And so, in this case, it would be the city council that would sit in review of a complaint of another city council member. And I guess I haven't seen this before where somebody from the outside would come in to enforce ethics. Usually, it's, well, not, I mean, in my experience invariably, it's always been the peers that sit in that type of review.
Sure. I can tell you how that I've seen them in my review. The second is that keep in mind that there's a two-stage process, and I'm not trying to eliminate the two-stage process. So, I am just having the Finance Committee be replaced, I'm just suggesting the Finance Committee be replaced by a standalone Ethics Committee. Again, they come with a recommendation that's sent to the common council, and then that is where, so if you're talking about the peers, they would then be voting whether or not to adopt the recommendation, and if so, what penalty to put into place. Also, keep in mind that this is for employees as well as council members, so it applies to a broader range than just council members.
Okay.
What I have seen typically with much larger municipalities is that the different districts that the municipality is made up of is that there'll be one person selected from each district on that staggering schedule. So, if you have different sections of town, different districts, trying to get a full makeup of the population there.
Anybody else?
We have elections for a reason. They don't like it, the districts, they remove you through election process. It's, this is a safeguard for the most egregious things. Now, whether we got off the rails this last time around should never happen again, and for us to be looking to strengthen something that I hope to God we don't have to use ever again is ridiculous. I don't agree with that.
Yeah. Well, we certainly are going to have an opportunity to discuss it, so. So, uh, it'll be back on the agenda, recommendations, uh, incorporating the things from Geraldine will be on that as well as I presume, uh, a couple of different options for the makeup of the committee.
I'd like to make a suggestion. If we have, okay, first of all, it's unlikely that, or hopefully, there won't be very many, um, times when we need an Ethics Committee. So maybe instead of having a separate Ethics Committee that is appointed from scratch, we could think about, all right, should we pull somebody from each of the different committees that we've got already in place so that we would say the Ethics Committee would be made up of these people so that we wouldn't have to appoint, or the mayor wouldn't have to appoint a separate committee that probably won't even have to meet anyway. So for example, we could specify a certain person from the Plan Commission, from the Park Board, from the, um, Urban Forestry Board, uh, things like that in order to make up the, the committee without having a, a separate appointment process. So anyway, I think we have things to think about between now and our next meeting.
That can all come up to the next time we talk about it, so.
I will jump on that point, if you don't mind, to say that, um, whether I'm dealing with a county or municipality, seeing this double duty, seeing people on the Ethics Committee, um, from other committees is very common. And whether you want to formalize that, if, if you want to go down that road, if you want to formalize it to say that, you know, one from each committee, that's certainly one way to go. Um, but yes, I certainly, with committees that don't meet very often, I often see, uh, the, the governmental entity having those individuals basically doing double duty from a separate committee.
I have a question on that last point, Geraldine, that, uh, that Joyce had brought up. Is it, is it possible to not have designated? Cause it's designated right now, right, as the finance, as the Finance Committee?
Correct.
Does it have to be designated?
Oh, you mean, you mean that?
Cause my understanding from what Joyce was saying was that if there was a complaint, then we would appoint.
Uh, I was reading her differently to say that, um, and that's a possibility. You can, you could revise the statute to say, that, not statute, but the ordinance, forgive me, uh, to say that when a complaint arises, then the mayor will then, you know, select or however you want to do the selection process. Just keep in mind the time issue with that.
Yes.
Because then you have to go through the selection process, you've got to go through the acceptance process. So you might be slowing yourself down and you might have an issue that needs immediate attention.
Good point, good point. I think overall, for me, it's, we, we should be figuring out a different makeup of committee because it is a, an even number rather than an odd number currently.
That is one thing that I point out, yes.
Thanks.
All right, I think we all got it down. Geraldine, thank you very much for the work that you've done. Appreciate you being here tonight, explain it all. And hopefully, uh, well, maybe we'll see you soon down the road.
All right. Have a good evening, everybody.
All right, thanks.
Bye.
All right, uh, consent agenda?
Approve the meeting minutes from the April 11th, 2022 regular council meeting and the April 19, 2022 organizational meeting. Approve claims in the amount of $575,144.17. Approve the fireworks applications. Approve the conditional use permit. Six-month scheduled review for Hudson School District's electronic message display sign at 1501 Vine Street, Hudson School District. Approve the quote from Countryside Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $8,664 to replace the AC furnace unit at 1520 Second Street. Approve the purchase of a forestry mulcher from Tri-State Bobcat in the amount of $25,150. Approve the letters of engagement for the topographic surveys for potential 2022 BIL projects contingent upon obtaining grant funding for each project. Approve Lakefront Park boat ramp lighting change order in the amount of $39,462.93. Approve Altissimo dog washing event. Approve the Gopher to Badger Run. Approve the Fit Real Estate Event. Approve Booster Days 2022. Approve the Global 6K. Approve the Brit Fest Yellowstone Trail Car Show and approve the Camera and LPR Project.
Move for approval.
Second. Yeah, motion is second to approve roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, consent agenda is approved. Um, on to new business, discussion on public comments.
Sorry. Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much. I did ask this to be on this agenda or even a possible, um, public hearing. And that is still what I would like to proceed with. Um, the reason why I brought this up was when I was watching the candidate forum, uh, that was hosted through our chamber, this was one of the questions that came up. And it was, um, of the four newly elected people or re-elected individuals, this was something that three affirmed and that we needed some further discussion and maybe some review. So I would like us to consider having a public hearing. Um, I, I understand and respect that, um, we don't have to even give the opportunity for public comment, but we do. And we have heard from a number of individuals, um, business owners, uh, leaders in nonprofits that they would like an opportunity to share their opinions. And, um, I would like to hear from them and I think a public hearing is the way to do it. And perhaps nobody will come and then we'll be able to continue as is. And if, if not, we can reevaluate if we need to make any changes.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree that a, a public hearing would be appropriate for this. There, there have been people who have made comments that they're not happy with the policy. So let's see what they have to say.
All right, we can do that.
Well, I feel that having a public hearing might also give us opportunity to educate the public why we do have the guidelines and what some of the issues are actually mandated by state law and why it's non-agenda items. You know, that, those are frustrating things for people when they want to get engaged in an issue and they come to a meeting and they're told they can't speak that night. And, you know, yes, there was an opportunity for them to know about it earlier that they may not have availed themselves of, but, you know, how can we help people to understand that? And the reasoning why it, what that is and the fact that some of the guidelines are actually to protect the public from us discussing things that weren't publicly noticed. You know, that's why we can't respond to those public comments when they're at the podium. Uh, because it was a discussion that hasn't been noticed to the breast of the public. So people on the other side of that issue aren't here to discuss it as well. And so I do think having some forum so we can help people understand what are the guidelines we have, what are the options we could consider? So I don't know if we would have a proposal on the table first before we hold that hearing to discuss that or what do you, what are you thinking, Councilmember Brooke?
Well, I have two, two, um, follow-ups from that, so thank you, those are great points. Um, is that, if we do have a public hearing, is that something where we could take a few minutes in the beginning to say, this is the structure? I, I understand that you do that almost at every meeting, you kind of, you go through that. But is that something that we could reiterate at the start of that, just kind of offering an educational opportunity?
Sure.
I guess I would feel more comfortable waiting to hear from residents before we talk about how to move forward. Um, so maybe it'd be a time for us to hear and then to put it on a future agenda if we want to make any revisions. I'm wondering if that is what makes the most sense and if other people have different feelings, I certainly am open to hearing those.
Well, the point you just said, you said residents and that's what I would prefer, to see it stay, possibly, uh, owners of businesses as well. And it's not used for personal attacks or electioneering. And the last few months or year, it's been terrible. Both sides, whatever the issue is, it's been terrible. That's what we need to avoid.
Mm-hmm.
And make it, uh, make it an, an, an educational, a resource for us, but not, not attacking. Not, not getting in these things that happened in January and everything. And I don't want to, I don't want to rehash the past, but moving forward, clarifying what?
So then we could have, maybe we need to have better guidelines on that so that it's clear that it is about city issues that the council can take action on.
And Councilmember Morissette, I agree, respectful, uh, disagreement.
All right, so public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, discussion of possible action to suspend ordinance section 176 dash two for the month of May, 2022 to support no mow May.
So I guess this is me again. Um, this was something that we discussed at our Public Works and actually it was brought forward, um, through residents um, who expressed interest in us, um, offering an opportunity to suspend ordinance, um, 176 dash two for the month of May, 2022 in an effort to protect our pollinators and to get them, um, best set up for success. Um, they are pivotal, um, for food source and for many reasons. And the, um, the ordinance or the, the motion did pass two to one, which is why we are here. It didn't, it was not unanimous. Uh, and so I think I would like to make a motion that we suspend ordinance, uh, 176 dash two for the month of May, 2022 to support no mow May with the understanding that it is a trial to see how it is for the future.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion, a second, discussion?
Yeah, I, I also sent this information to, um, asked to have this put on the, the council meeting. And, um, I, my intentions and my vision is that we use this as an opportunity to educate the public and to make it optional, but allow people to be able to, to do this so that they can do what's, what's right for the, the polliners and poll, pollinators and, uh, for the, um, for sustainability and for our environment. So that is why I brought it to, to the attention of the city.
So the intent, the intent here then is just to, uh, suspend the, uh, ordinance that requires mowing your lawn, it can't be, what is it, eight inches?
Six. Six.
Mm-hmm, just for the month of May.
Comment since I was, um, also on the Public Works Committee. And we had a good discussion that night and I did vote against it, so I'd like to share my thoughts for you. Uh, a lot of my thinking is based on our climate and our USDA plant hardiness zone, we're rated four, which means that it's winter for a long time. The gardeners, you know, were waiting and hoping for something to bloom soon. And actually, sometimes we do have snow in May. In fact, the last frost date here in our area is usually May 15th. In other words, after May 15th, you are safe to plant something in the ground for people who are, you know, putting in their vegetable gardens or perhaps flower beds. So we, we definitely have a cold month of May, but we can have an early spring. And when we do, the grass does grow and we get dandelion growth. So that's my concern is that this while, and I do realize that there is a segment of people that believe that those dandelions provide quite a healthy habitat for, uh, the bees. I think it might be somewhat debatable, but research is being done on how much it benefits the bees. My concern is that they really, dandelions, many residents do consider a, a noxious or an undesirable weed. So if you, a neighbor, and I'm concerned about unintended consequences because if a neighbor allows their lawn to grow and allows the dandelions to grow and they get to the point that they come to their head and seed out, then that is easily spread to neighboring yard, which then, you know, that's one of the reasons for those ordinances. It's like they say, a fence makes a good neighbor. Well, an ordinance like this makes a good neighbor, help people to, you know, sort of forestall any disagreements. I do feel that the, um, the chance of this being actually enforced in May, so it does seem like it is somewhat symbolic. And again, I just feel like, uh, perhaps the month is the wrong month to choose because it is a complaint-based ordinance, the chance of our grass being over six inches high isn't real great in May. And, but if we do have an early spring, I am concerned about those dandelions. And then the unintended consequence would be if dandelions in my yard are going to seed and blowing into the neighbors, we might actually find people using more chemicals on their lawn to counteract that. And so again, I do wholeheartedly support the development of, of sustainable, uh, plantings, flower beds, flowering trees and shrubs that would foster those pollinators and encourage our bee habitat. I think there's gardening practices, actually, the Pioneer Press has covered this several times recently. A most recent article over the weekend, uh, Extension Advisor from University of Minnesota listed some planting guidelines that gardeners could do proactively. And I'm more in favor of that sort of movement for the council. I think we've got a lot of local organizations, gardening club, maybe a scouting group, 4H. Uh, we have master gardeners that live in our community that could chime in and, pardon me?
Rotary.
Rotary, sure. They, they, they could help enhance those things, cause I'm definitely in favor of that. I just want to make that very clear, very much in favor of enhancing the bee, bee environment and their habitat. I just think this might be misdirected partly because of our northern climate that May is not a good time to select, uh, to, you know, to lift the, or suspend the ordinance. So thank you for listening to my, my side of the view.
I have no objection. I've answered a few emails from constituents and I said I had no objection. My concern is the folks that actually their lawn is their, uh, I don't know, their happy place. And that's me. I spend a lot of money in, on watering, fertilizing company, et cetera, et cetera, uh, to keep my not-so-enthusiastic neighborhood, who may not do that, from polluting my yard. And I like to spend a few hours on my tractor cutting grass. I, I like the program and I'll support it if we don't suspend the rule. Why can't we do it without suspending the rule? So when we have the issues, that we have to back it up with our ordinance.
So what are you suggesting?
Pass it, have a registration at the city hall or whoever gets the, the, whoever makes those posters. Cause I too read the article this weekend, it's been on the newscast, both nights, last night and tonight. Um, I don't really have a problem, but I have a problem with creeping Charlie and dandelions coming in my yard. I support the bees. But I, I don't think we need to suspend the rule. As you would say, the unintended consequences could be somebody's neighbor and it's getting everybody else who works time and money in their yard.
I, I just got to say, Randy, I, I respect where you're coming from on this, but the last thing I want to do is to see our staff burdened with something.
I get that.
To have people come in, now we got to have forms and they can register. Those registrations have got to go out to Public Works so that if they have, get a call to go out and enforce and they have to run that against that, they have to go out there and run that address against an address on registration. I, you know, this is, this is fine, uh, as a policy. I, I too support pollinators and, uh, different ways of trying to increase their population, enhance their environment. But I, I, we can't burden our staff with anything if we're going to do this.
Well, how's it gonna work?
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, maybe we could, I, before this was even at Public Works, I did connect with Mike Maraz, the Director of Public, uh, Works and our parks on how he thought this would be handled so it'd be the least impactful. And, um, I'm not sure, should we ask him to come up and share what, or do you want me to tell what we had decided?
I mean, you said you'd do whatever you want.
Okay. Mike, maybe perhaps you'd be willing to share what we talked about, what would be the least impactful to you?
Yeah, so basically what I would do is I would just create a Excel spreadsheet. People would call in, reg, register their, their residence, right? Um, I don't know how many would happen, if it'd be 20, 30, 40, 50, but all it would be is, you know, jotting down their name, their address, basically having a laminated poster, you know, a 11, eight by 11, eight and a half by 11 at the front desk, they can come and grab it. And then, uh, I could forward that on to Bradley Kuzmerik, our, uh, compliance officer. So if a complaint does come in from a resident or a neighbor, you can just look at the list and say, you know, they registered for the no mow May, we will, uh, enforce that on June 1st. And that's kind of what I was thinking.
So why can't we just do that? Why do we have to suspend the rule? Because we have. Because we have, we have individuals out there that are going to have that issue anyways.
Why, I don't get this. I, you know, I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to do it, then do it in the least impactful way to the staff. If I'm the neighbor of somebody who's registered and their grass is growing to eight inches and mine is eight too, why am I being punished because I didn't register my yard? And that makes no sense to me at all. You got people on either side of me doing this with registration and I didn't and I'm going to be punished and their yards, their lawns are maybe higher than mine. That part I don't like. And I don't like that this is, could be setting a precedent for something else that comes down the road that sounds like a really good idea and now we're going to impose this on our staff again because we've already done it once, you know? Why not? Let's do it again and again and again and again. No, if we're going to do this, I don't want this.
So you're saying all or none, really?
Well, or maybe there's something in between. I don't know. Just anything that keeps our staff out of the enforcement of this.
So are you saying suspend, suspend enforcement for May across the city?
I'm not.
Registration, if you want to cut your grass and fertilize it, do it. If I don't want to do it, I mean, the registration is what's causing the time, the consuming of our.
No doubt, no doubt. No, and that's, that's just that one side of the argument. I'd like to take our staff out of the equation, period, and then debate the merits of whether we should suspend or not. Or something in between. Maybe there's another idea out there.
Well, the motion is to just suspend the ordinance. It is not to have anybody register or anything else being tracked.
And the compliance officer is part of the police department, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I did not do the research ahead of time, but I'm guessing that there aren't very many complaints filed in May nor enforcements. Again, in our climate, I'm expecting more that it's that lawn that's in August that hasn't been mowed for a while and people are starting to take notice of it, what's going on. You know, hopefully in Hudson, people jump in and help their neighbor if they know there's a new baby in the house or something like that. But okay.
Is there anybody we haven't heard from yet who would like to speak?
Good evening. To be honest, by the time in May, right, by the time someone's grass grows long enough to solicit a complaint and then our compliance officer has the opportunity to do the inspection and then send notice and wait the timeframe to bring the property into compliance.
It's already July.
Will be in June. It does take some time. It's not, it's not, you know, the reality of government work, right? But I mean, nobody's even mowing their lawn yet, right? Granted, it's been a delayed spring. But generally speaking, by the time it gets to a point where it's going to foster a complaint, there's a complaint notification, there's an inspection that has to be done, there's notification that has to be made and a timeframe to bring that property into compliance. So.
So I've been doing, oops, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, so we have a motion on the table, on the floor.
Got it.
Go ahead, Bill.
Oh, I was just going to say, you know, I've been doing no May, I don't know, this is my second or third year running, unintentional or not, but we never see the grass really at eight inches within May. I feel like, you know, I almost feel like a proclamation might be in order versus suspending the rule. I think the suspension of the rule is kind of a non-starter, if you will, only because we're not going to see what everybody else has really talked about, you know, eight inches of grass. So I'm in favor for this year. I think it would be worth looking at in, in future years, doing something that's a little bit more meaningful, if you will. But I just wanted to throw those two sets out.
Would a proclamation satisfy the whole intent?
A proclamation doing the same thing as suspending the rule?
Suspending the rules, yeah.
The ordinance? Yeah, I think so. I think, I think, you know, it's got the same audience.
I like the idea of a proclamation in addition to the suspension of the ordinance.
Well, I don't think that we're going to come up with a proclamation tonight and then we're what, middle of May before we meet again?
Right.
So perhaps we continue with the motion at hand and unless there's any friendly amendments to it and with the understanding that we will look into it earlier in the season next year.
I think we should evaluate this in June or had our June, one of our June meetings so that we can make a recommendation for next year at that time.
Unless, of course, somebody had a prepared proclamation.
Does somebody have a prepared proclamation? Does somebody have a prepared?
Well, maybe Bill did. He brought it up.
I didn't.
I, I would.
Sorry, I was on a plane all day, so no.
I would reiterate what the chief said, and that is from a practical perspective, even if you get to next year and you want to have the same discussion from a practical perspective, there's an issue, there's a complaint filed with the police department, the officer goes out and takes a look, issues a letter, makes a warning. I mean, you're far better off to make a statement about your intention. We highlight things all the time by proclamation or, you know, by announcement at council meeting or whatnot. I just, I tend to think that that's probably a more effective way of getting the word out rather than looking at a suspension of the ordinances. It's just not, it's not a particularly effective way to, I think, accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
Duly noted.
Do the other cities like Crystal and Edina or Eagan or where this came from more in the cities, did they suspend or did they just proclaim?
That when we had done some of the reading and looking into it, this was the way that a lot of other communities had handled it.
Yeah.
I just still think there could be unintended consequences. Like I said, I support the bees. I support the effort, but.
Well, let's try it for one year and see, I mean, it's only a month. See what happens and then reevaluate it in June.
You know, I was just having a bit of a brief conversation here with, with Nick and we could probably do a proclamation right now. And if we wanted, if that's what we wanted to do, okay, if that's what the desire of the council would be, it could be done right now. And again, the audience is the same. So the, as far as getting the word out, it would get out just as quickly, just as easily as a suspension of the ordinance. And, and it would, I don't know that I've ever seen a proclamation from the council as a whole, but we could probably do that, couldn't we?
You sure can. I mean, the council can proclaim May to be no mow May for the purpose of supporting, enhancing, facilitating, whatever you'd like to include in that council proclamation. So I think that would probably be the most appropriate way to do it if you'd like to make some sort of statement of that kind.
I'd also like to direct city staff to have information on the website about no mow May so that there's some educational information available on the city website.
Does the proclamation cover Randy's concept that he wants a nice green grass in May?
That it's optional, that you can opt in if you want to?
Right, but the city won't ticket anyone if someone calls in. Since we're not going to register, we're just making a proclamation.
No, they would ticket the normal violator.
They wouldn't.
Correct?
Yeah.
What? If we had a proclamation?
They would, yeah.
Yeah, we have to suspend the ordinance in order to.
Well, and what was the point of the discussion of a proclamation?
Well, I would like to see a proclamation really state some affirmative things that people can do. Even people who despise dandelions can do some things in their yard with certain planting, certain flowers. And again, that's why my nod to the master gardeners and so on. And that kind of information could be put on the city website, Joyce, or we could invite someone to come and speak at one of our meetings so that we're not just saying don't mow during this month when it may or may not be impactful depending on the year, but that we also really advocate for the other things that you can do that provide environment. For example, if you don't clean the sort of decomposing litter around your shrubs and leave that for a little bit longer, that provides some protective environment for bees. Little tips like that and gardening techniques, landscape ideas could be helpful.
Yeah, those were, some of that was in some of the information that I saw. And then so maybe what we could do is recommend some, some tips or something? Is that something that you'd want to draw up?
I'd be glad to consult with some of my friends who are expert gardeners.
Okay.
But yes, but as far as tonight, I mean, that was just my comment that if we do make a proclamation, I think it would be nice to include so that everyone, again, everyone can do something to help the bee habitat and to encourage our pollinators, even if they do want the immaculate green lawn. There are other options. So, sorry.
Unless we want this meeting to go well into the wee hours, I don't think we're going to have language tonight for that. Nick, you want to?
Well, my only thought is that if you, if you want to issue a proclamation, we're not going to get that done tonight, but certainly we have a meeting in two weeks. It's still in the month of May and you could still encourage and support so that it's drafted for this year and then it becomes the basis for what you do next year as well. So that is an option. I know it's not a perfect option, but it's an option for drafting a well-thought-out, well-worded proclamation if you'd like.
You know, I think, I think in support of the proclamation, we go back to what the chief had to say about enforcement of this. It wouldn't, wouldn't be enforced actually until June anyway, you know, making people mow. So.
But then.
Proclamation would probably suffice.
But if we suspend the ordinance, then nothing would need to be investigated until June 1st. So then that would save a little bit of time for the compliance officer.
Okay, and that's the motion. So.
Mm-hmm.
I, we'll take a vote on that in just a moment. I think, I think it's, I think this is worthwhile, okay? I think it's a worthy thing. And I do know that, that some of the gardeners, they had the, what are the bee bombs? That, that were, I would hope are so popular. And they were very much involved in that. A lot of people in the city. And I think it's just a public awareness of the issue would be a good thing. And we've got some time to work on, on a more robust approach for next year. But in the meantime, we've got the motion in front of us. Any other conversation on the discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion's approved.
Before we go on, there's some information about Bee City USA. I'd like to bring that to the council and then at a future meeting, whether we want to consider becoming a bee city.
Okay. Discussion of possible action to suspend ordinance, oh, that's, we did that already. Anybody want to talk about that again?
No.
Discussion of possible action on intergovernmental agreement related to library funding.
So as we have in the, in the packet, it's a, basically a proposal of an agreement with the county and the partners in the joint library as a way to pretty dramatically increase the funding that's available for the library. The main driver behind this is, as we've kind of talked about before, is that any sort of levying by the city or its partners in the library, for the library counts against our levy limits. And so in a proposal like this where the county does it, it does, the county does not count against their levy limits in that process. You know, I want to note, and I didn't maybe note this in finance, that this is definitely not a way for any of the partners to circumvent the levy limits. So whatever amount that we levied for the library this year, we will remove, we will request the state remove from our levy limits moving forward for next year because, you know, we don't want to say that we're not levying for it, but now we're going to use it for something else. That's, that's definitely not our intent with this. So we want to make sure that that's, that's very clear. It's just a way that we can increase the funding for the library to the level that they really should be at. And it's a, it's kind of a creative process to do it, but it's kind of where we're stuck to try to get to the result we want to have. We have had this reviewed by every state agency we can think of. We've had it reviewed by our insurer, you know, all those sort of things. So we feel confident that this is an allowable way for us to move forward and that's, you know, kind of where we are right now. And as you can see in Shelley's summary of kind of implications, if we don't increase funding, it can have some very dramatic impacts on our library. So as we mentioned in the memo, this has to be approved by us and then all the partners and the county as well. So this is only the first step in that process.
I'll move to approve the agreement related to library funding with our municipal partners.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve, discussion. You know, one thing, once again, I think, I think all the members were here for finance. So I think you heard what I had to say. But I would like to, again, thank everybody that was involved in this. We've been working on this for about a year. I think who I did miss was Shelley, obviously, the director of the library being involved, the board of trustees there. But I'd like to thank all of our municipal partners. I'd like to thank the Drafters Statutes Office, Department of Revenue Office, our local elected officials that represent us at the state and, and the people at the county, as well as Aaron. And, you know, I mean, it's been quite a process. And so I think this, this could be, you know, could very well be the, the long-term permanent solution we've been looking for. So here we go. Any other discussion?
I have a couple of comments or questions. And I do want to thank you, Mayor O'Connor, for your hard work. I know we've benefited in several areas of our public life by having these partnerships with our other municipalities. And we, it helps us and helps them. And I know you've worked closely with the leaders and gone through some of these details. I thank you for the information in the packet. I have a couple of questions about that. It's in the packet. So can I, I have several, I can listen to the answer and then we'll go on. First of all, I wanted to ask about the determination on the actual document recital number five where a county library tax subject to the agreement $71,689 is distributed to the St. Craig County Public Libraries in compensation. So those are to the rural libraries, if I'm not mistaken. And what formula was used to determine that amount and is that set for the future? What assurance do we have that the, that the formula will remain fair to us?
Right. So this is the formula that's been used ever since the joint library was formed. It was something developed by the county because, and I don't have all the history with it, but because it was felt that with the joint library, there was still, our joint library was having a negative impact on the other libraries in the county. And so this was a way to distribute some of the funding that our library should be receiving to them to help compensate them for what was perceived and still perceived as a negative impact on them. How that formula is determined and if it remains the same is completely up to the county. We have nothing to do with that. We'd actually like to see it go away, but that's not our call.
Sure. And we can't, of course, bind a future group anyway, even if we got the current county board to say, oh yeah, we'll promise.
Right.
Joyce, do that, that way. Future groups might change it. So you don't necessarily look at it as a, it's not just a penalty for not being involved in the past. It's kind of the set formula that we'll go in the future. Is that what you're anticipating?
Yes, the mayor tried very hard to get that removed in this process, but I think it's, in the county's opinion, it's something that needs to remain.
Sure.
I believe, I, well, I'm not going to go there. We need to, we need to work with these guys. We need to get this done.
Sure. But that, that compensation can be based on circulation.
Right.
It's a circulation fee.
Yes.
For someone who uses a different library than their municipality has an arrangement with. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, it's based upon, at the time, the joint library agreement was first entered into the amount of perceived loss of distribution over at, circulation rather, at the surrounding libraries to the communities that are our partners. So Somerset was, they're part of, or I'm sorry, St. Joe, rather, is arguably part of the Somerset Library as well as now a partner with us. And so Somerset was losing circulation. Same thing with River Falls, same thing with Roberts and Richmond. I'm missing one, I think. But to, and all the, the impacts were varied greatly. River Falls was the most impacted. River Falls was the most impacted of the group.
Because of the Troy township used their library as much as ours, is that why?
Town of Hudson.
Town of Hudson, okay. You know, I do understand that, that because they were a part of our joint library, they didn't get the compensation, even if a resident used their library.
Right.
They didn't get compensated for that. So I realize there's a sense of fairness there. So I did want, thank you for clarifying that. We'll hope for the best going forward. And I did just want clarification on a couple of points in the letter from the DPI. And I understand in private conversation with you, Mayor O'Connor, but I just wanted to ask you, or to get information. Do you feel like the questions that were raised by DPI have all been dealt with? That's what you mentioned, going to the Department of Revenue.
Yep.
All of those things you did at the state level have assured us that...
We believe that. We, in fact, we preemptively went to the Department of Revenue. And just in case anybody would question this and then go to the department and without us having done that first. So, yeah, I think that all the questions have been answered.
And thank you for your thoroughness on that. I know you have worked very hard and long, and Aaron as well, the two of you, as well as our city attorney. I just wanted to make it clear, because the document that I got raised the questions, I didn't know the answers.
And I can say that some of the responses were more informal, like via email. And so it wasn't, this was the most thorough response we got. Like, the Department of Revenue mostly was just kind of an email response or things. We have been writing from the director and things, but it wasn't this formal sort of thing. Each department seems to operate a little differently how they respond, so...
You feel like you've checked all those boxes, the questions that they raised?
We're not sure how we can get any different, any more answers from anybody else. That's kind of where we stand.
Thank you. I appreciate how thorough you are. I guess my only other comment is I do feel like we need to say in public that this will lead to a tax increase for our residents. And I know that the library needs more funding, and I absolutely support that, that they do need more funding. But it's, this tax increase is going to be on the county line instead of our line. So I do think it's fair, just as an elected body, that we acknowledge that, that these arrangements have been made to help support and to keep the joint library intact because we feel that is the best for these partnering municipalities, and that this is a solution that's been hammered out. And yes, we do acknowledge that there is going to be a tax increase, but we feel that that's what's needed. So I just wanted to make that statement today also.
Right. Okay, thank you for that.
I've got a question. The agreement where it says, "Now therefore, the parties agree as follows." In number three, it has the dollar amount, but is there anything in here that says how future dollar amounts will be calculated?
It's, they're using the state formula for how you distribute library funding. So let's say we had a county library, a county system or something like that. I mean, they're using that set formula. So my assumption would be, moving forward, that that's how they would always do it every year. But again, the county has to approve the funding, or approve kind of this, basically, this thing on an annual basis. So there's always that possibility that something could change, that they decide they want to try to do something different. I don't anticipate that. But there would have to be some sort of statutory justification for some sort of different funding formula. I don't think they can just arbitrarily say, "No, we're going to distribute money this way." I think they have to follow what's statutorily allowed to be, how they structure it. So I don't anticipate that there would be some sort of standoff or one-off, "Here's how we're going to fund you this year" sort of thing. I mean, they have to follow whatever is allowable that they can do, but, you know, that's their only option, really. I don't see how they can do anything differently.
Well, and what Aaron just said is really important. This is a one-year agreement. And we asked that it be a multi-year agreement, but those numbers are going to change every year.
Okay, so we're going to go through this every year, then?
Correct. So you will see an agreement before you every year, and it will go to the county every year for approval of this relationship because of the dollars that are specifically involved. So, you know, while we would like the mechanism to be permanent and in perpetuity, the county has come back and has said, "Well, we can't bind future county boards." We don't necessarily agree with that. But we accept it for what it is, and you will see this on an annual basis. And the county board, their committee and their county board will be required to approve this on an annual basis as well.
So keep in mind, as far as we're concerned from the city, it's an exercise that we would have to go through anyway during budget cycle. So we, one of the things, because we've never really met an exempt amount that would keep us from being taxed by, ultimately by, the county if we did not tax to that exempt amount, we, for whatever reason, I have no idea, never did that. We always just signed off, here's our exempt amount, but it never increased, and it was supposed to have, all right? So we have never actually, as council, not just us, but our, you know, previous councils have never actually gone through this to determine what that exempt amount is. So it's an exercise that we would be going through no matter what, every year. Okay?
But this one is for 2023's funding of the library?
Yes. So it would be included in our budget for that, with the budget cycle that we go through and starting in August, September for 2023, yes.
Is it correct that each of our partners would have to also go through the process?
That's absolutely right.
Which?
And which is something they haven't done either.
It's one of the, again, pros and cons, but generally, we're happy to be together in a partnership with them.
Right.
But to have four municipalities have to agree and move forward isn't easy. But I understand you've worked hard to get a consensus, so I appreciate that.
They'll all have to, they're going to be going through this as well, you know, but we're gonna, we're taking, we're the first ones out of the gate on this, and I believe the town will be taking it up tomorrow. Not sure when the village, North Hudson, will take it up. St. Joe will take it up. Hopefully, it'll be in their sequence of their next meetings. And we hope to have this, ultimately, the same language approved by each one of the municipalities by the end of May, early June, and then it's off to the county.
Would it be possible for you to email us an update on their decisions?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think also as important, as the mayor said, it has to be approved by the county as well, right? And as Councilwoman Knutson said, this is a tax that gets implemented by the county. So we hope the county feels, the county board feels, as we do, that this is the appropriate funding mechanism to keep the library here in Hudson funded fully as we think it should be, so...
All right, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's approved. Next, closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.35, Sub 1, Sub G, "For the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the city to discuss strategy regarding pending litigation property tax appeals." Do we have a motion?
Move to go into closed session.
I second that.
Motion, a second to go into closed session, roll call.
Horsette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Ruck?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved to go into closed session. We'll step across the hall. All right, sounds good. All right, we're back in open session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Was there anything else on here?
Well, communications.
No, I'm sorry, anything for future agendas?
I have nothing for a future agenda, but I do want to thank Public Works and Rotary for planting trees on Arbor Day. Mother Nature was super rainy, which was great for the trees, not so great for the planters. But a huge thank you to Mike and his crew.
Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
I second that.
Motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's approved, we stand adjourned.
Okay.